Yeah.
Good. Everybody good? Call the Exeter Township Planning Commission meeting of April fifteenth, 2024 to order. Please rise and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jeff. I have a second. Second?
Mitch.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is the motion, yeah, the motion to approve the minutes from January fifteenth, 2024. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Any comments, questions? No? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Eric. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Les. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next is a motion to approve the minutes of February the nineteenth, 2024. Everybody have a chance to review. Any comments, questions? No? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Les. Second by Mitch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next is the Planning Commission Annual Report, year end 2023. Did everybody review, have a chance to review? Did not?
See, it wasn't clear.
I don't remember that.
It was on that link.
Was it?
It's what he says. I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either. I missed it then. I didn't see it.
It wasn't clear that it was there. Why don't we read it?
It is on the link.
If you, yeah. It's, it's one, two, three, four, five, six down. I don't know why it says four hours. I don't know if something updated late. There are a few different times on there. If you want to maybe make a motion to table that until next, it's completely up to you guys.
Make the motion to table it.
I have a motion to table. Second by Mitch. Okay.
We don't need a vote on that at this point. Just table till next meeting.
And you, and you are gonna put the Forty Street proposal on that?
Yes. I'll add that to it and have that ready for you guys next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First item under new business, eight oh one Faber's Road. Discussion of a minor subdivision sketch plan.
Yep. Tom Luntke here for the, for the plan. Can you guys have that on PDF or show it to my board?
No, it'll be up in a second. It's thinking. Eric. It's on my computer, but it might be froze up.
I'm here with the owner, Don, as well. It's, it's a pretty simple two lot subdivision where Don currently lives. It's an eleven acre parcel right on Faber's Road. If you know where the really sharp apex vertical curve is, an apex road, it's right near there. That is a load I brought up.
It's trying. Give me a sec. Nothing yet. It may be having some difficulties. It says that it's, it says that it should be there. I'm not, not exactly sure why it's froze up.
It's got a board, so.
I'm gonna stop it and restart it completely and completely shut out of it.
We're using the board while we're waiting. That's, that's cool.
Sure. Absolutely.
So, this is Faber's Road. And you've got Don's existing house and his shop is down the far, oh, there you go.
Like your board better. That's better.
So you got Don's existing shop down the one end, and what he's proposing is a lot on the very far end of the other, of the lot. So it's an eleven acre lot, and they'll be splitting into two lots. Here, I can walk, I can go up there now.
Let's back it out a little bit. Sorry about that.
All right, that works. So there's Faber, there's his house, he's got a shop and a barn. And what's being proposed, the far north end, is about a four acre lot to be cut out from the rest of his property. Simple two lot subdivision, off with road frontage, on lot water, on lot sewer. He's got his primary, his backup on the new lot. He's got a backup on his, at his house lot. We have the GVC letter. We don't have a whole lot of questions, maybe some clarifications we can go through tonight or whatever you guys want to go through it. But we do have our Berks County Planning Commission review in. And we will be processing the planning module, believe it or not. We got a PND hit on this thing for block turtles, even though there's no wetlands and no green. So I have other questions we saw on the GVC level besides the few little clarifications I had, if the planning commission wants to ask anything.
Okay.
Joe, why don't we go through your review letter and then we'll open up the question.
Sure. If, if we reference our April ninth review letter and reference state of one Faber's Road, just under zoning district, entire projects located within the rural zoning district where this is an existing use of a single family detached dwelling, which is a use permitted by right. As Bob said, they did get a review letter from the Berks County Planning Commission. Unfortunately, they just, it wasn't able to be uploaded, so it will be then uploaded. But they did submit to the county and the county did review. Steep slopes need to be evaluated per section three ninety dash four A per zoning ordinance. There's some formulas that need to be looked at with steep slopes. That takes into account what usable area that can be, remain as for a lot size and so forth. Existing dwelling located, lot number two, is located within the front yard setbacks and is considered a pre-existing, non-conforming situation under subdivision of land development. Since the plan proposes the two residential lots, it does qualify or meet our sketch plan of record per section three thirty dash eleven. So we did treat this as a minor subdivision. Location map should be drawn to a scale one inch equals eight hundred. Number three, D P, planning module may be required. Number four, since this is a minor subdivision, our ordinance requires that a plan note be added stating that any further subdivision of the track within, under the section, within ten years will require full accordance with our major subdivision procedure. Right now, since they're under a minor sketch, it's pretty much just, I'll say, one step process. However, if any re-subdivision that takes place within the next ten year, then they'll have to follow the preliminary plan submission as well as the final plan submission. That note just needs to be added to the drawings. Number five is pretty much the certificates of ownerships need to be signed, a final plan, which, and same. Number six is just a general note that needs to be recorded in the recorder of deeds. Number seven, wetlands shall be delineated per section three thirty dash twelve B nineteen. They did submit a wetland report just today, but we did not have an opportunity to review that. Steep slopes is also reiterated under our SADO section. Then number nine, the township should determine if ultimate right of way be dedicated to the township for Faber, Faber's Road. The bold type are, are ones that we probably should discuss then after we're, we're going through the comment letter. Number ten, all required signature blocks need to be added. Proposed lot number two may not comply with a lot to width depth ratio until the steep slope evaluation is performed. So once that's performed, then we can make that determination of whether or not there, there need a waiver or if it's in compliant. Number twelve, aerial image and color of the track adjacent to the track boundary shall be provided. Number thirteen, statement on the plan should be provided for the method of water supply and sewage disposal. Number fourteen is more of a reiteration that the sewage facility's planning module approval is required. Steep slopes, number fifteen, may be subject to conservation easements. Number sixteen, site distance of the proposed driveway location should be provided since Faber's Road has a history of very blind spots that we've had in the past. That needs to be evaluated just to make sure it's in compliant with the, the same regulations as, as for PND chapter four forty-one. Under general comments, plans are not proposing any stormwater facilities, therefore our review just acknowledged, do not acknowledge that there is no development of this at, at this time. Once they do develop that lot, they will need to submit a complete stormwater plan for, in accordance with their Act one sixty-seven stormwater ordinance. And then finally, number three is just a continuation of number one that we do recommend a plan being added to the drawings showing that the proposed lot two will require a complete supplemental of the stormwater and erosion and sediment control plan per our township Act one sixty-seven stormwater ordinance. If anybody has any questions, please let me know. I'll try to answer them.
Questions, questions from planning commission?
If, if there isn't any questions, my recommendation would be we, we should discuss whether or not we want to recommend any ultimate right of way dedication for Faber's Road. It's in our ordinance. Typically on rural roads, we haven't been requiring it, but we do have the right to ask for that additional right of way.
And Joe, clarification on that is that it's always offered. It's a matter of we want to act.
Right. Correct. Correct. We, we've been very, I'll say selective in areas where we have plans or if it's in the master street plan where we might be acquiring right of way for improvements. However, in the past where we have rural subdivisions, something similar to what they're proposing this evening, we have declined to recommend any acquisition of right of way due to the fact that there is no long-term plans for Faber's Road. Typically where it's more urbanized or more developed, we've been requiring it. Or if it part of four twenty-two, we've been asking for additional right of way because there are some plans that PND is looking into for expanding four twenty-two and, and doing some signal improvements and possible lane widening for the stretch, I'll say the eastern stretch of four twenty-two. So in those situations, we have been recommending to the board of supervisors for additional right of way and those applicants have provided those, that additional right of way as necessary.
I think the only, the only thing recently that we, we've asked for where it was more rural was the subdivision at the top of Church Lane and Wegman Road. But we view Church Lane as more of a arterial road in that area, so.
Church has a higher amount of traffic utilizing that street.
Yeah. I think that was the only case where we had a rural area that we asked for, so.
We have a number of years to act on it in the future if we, if there would be a reason.
Right. The township always has the right to acquire additional right of way for many of the residents. This is a situation where if we feel as though there is a need, it's easier to obtain that at this time than go through the formality of acquiring it.
I would be of the opinion we would remain consistent with what we did in the past in the rural areas, knowing we have the ability if and when there's a need in the future.
You want to make a motion? Does that affect?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So motion from Eric to recommend waiving the ultimate right of way dedication on the subdivision plan for Faber's Road.
I'll second.
I have a second. Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Under wetlands, they did had, they did just recently had a wetland study conducted, unfortunately, like it was just submitted today. So that'll be looked at at our, at the next plan submission, but that has been completed. And they did look at the steep slopes, so that, that'll have to be reviewed.
So at this point, those couple of things need to be cleaned up and then could actually come back then hopefully at the next meeting.
And get final plan. Since, since they're not going through the preliminary and then the final plan submission, then it would be, the planning commission could be in a position to recommend approval if they, they so desire.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Yes.
For the ultimate right of way, we tend to leave the ultimate right of way on the plan offered usually for twenty-one years. Is that still a game plan?
I think in this case, we have not been, we only showed it when we acquired it.
Yeah.
Do we blow up the plan then? Which is okay with me.
I know our, our solicitor's opinion is unless there's a deed of dedication. I've heard different opinions. Some will say if the plan's recorded and it's shown on there, then the ultimate right of way is, is the township. But I've noticed more solicitors are seeming to lean towards it has to have a separate deed of dedication for to be, to be and recorded in the courthouse. So I think to answer their question, there's no need to show it unless the board chooses to require it. But we'll recommend not.
We would, being consistent with what we've done in the past, we would not ask for it to be shown.
And the second question on the steep slopes and the conservation easement, does the township have like a standing conservation easement they want to see?
In the past, we've have required in some areas, sensitive areas where a conservation easement was required. However, the planning commission at their discretion could determine whether or not there's a, we would require it. Since this is a minor subdivision and not a major subdivision, the past major subdivisions we have, in, I'm talking some years ago, we have required that easement, I believe, on Exeter Golf Club Estates. But since this is a minor subdivision, I think it's to the discretion of the planning commission whether you would, would require it or, or, or not require.
I couldn't tell by the graph. Is there a lot of steep slopes on this?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
You, you already have an ordinance provision on steep slopes that, that restricts usage and impacts.
Yes, we do.
This would just be, you know, whether you want the additional actual easement document or just let those ordinances hold as the protection.
I don't think we need to overcomplicate what, you know, with what this is. So I don't, my thought is that we would not need the conservation.
I think due to the fact it is a minor subdivision, I, I think if this was a major subdivision where we were having open space land and areas, township may want to consider easements to protect that, especially if it's in sensitive areas. But in this situation, I mean, it's to the discretion of the planning commission, but it is, it's something that we haven't required in the past.
One lot, minor subdivision.
Have you reached the point discussing how many trees will stay, go?
As of right now, there's no, there's no design for any specific development. But the way we have the lot line drawn in, we're really not impacting much of the woodland. Most of that falls on the larger lot. So this lot line was picked to be like at, at the edge of the woods. So there's certainly be some impact with the driveway, but where the main house is gonna go, the rest of it is all open fieldway now. Which is why we have the lot line where we have it.
Okay.
So do we need to make a recommendation to waive that requirement, Joe?
Yes, I would, I would make a recommendation. Yes, I would make.
I have a motion to recommend waiver of the conservation easement for the minor subdivision that's being proposed.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay. Jeff made the motion. Seconded by Les. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Anything else? Good. All right. Well, thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, ten thirty-six Reading Avenue. This is a revision to an approved final plan. This is the property that's down behind the sheets that we had reviewed two, three meetings ago, I believe it was, Jason, maybe longer.
It was, I believe it was January.
January, yeah.
The plans, the previous plans were approved by the board of supervisors. However, Jason, correct me, they were not signed, correct?
Correct.
And they're not signed or recorded. So the plan this evening, and I'll, I'll let Chuck do his, the presentation. They're looking at reconfiguring two of the lots to increase the size since their client acquired some more land.
Good evening, everyone. Chuck France with C two C Design Group. Yeah, I, I think Joe did a pretty good job of, of sort of summarizing, you know, what has changed. Basically, what this is turning into is essentially a annexation plan and a subdivision plan to create three lots. Lot one would contain the existing single family dwelling that's located at the intersection of the unopened Reading Avenue and Sunset Manor Drive. And then we'd also be creating two additional lots, lot two and lot three. I think it's about twenty-six thousand square feet, about twenty-nine thousand square feet, give or take, for lot three. At this point, it is simply the, the annexation subdivision plan. Nothing is being proposed at this time as far as any development of the lots. Obviously, any development, any structures that would be proposed in the future would require the necessary permits and applications with the township for any structures that are built on those lots. So the plan that you see here tonight is, is simply a, again, essentially not to dumb it down, but we're basically redrawing lines at this point, consolidating and annexing other portions of lots. So, Joe, I don't know if that is sort of enough of a.
Sure. Yeah. We did review the plans. They're, they were, as we mentioned before, they were prior approval. However, as Chuck said, some of the lot lines have changed to increase the lot size. We did not have, some of the standard comments that are referenced in our April eleventh meeting, I'm sorry, April eleventh review letter states basically that they need to do deconsolidation for proposed lot number two. And number three, the note on the plan for waiver should change to say deferral sidewalk. They did not grant a waiver. It was only a deferral at this point. And then standard comments for signatures and then any future development proposed in existing lots along Reading Avenue may require Reading Avenue to be approved to township standards depending upon what the future they're planning on for, for development. And general comment is we did not review this assuming any construction only for the sake of consolidating existing lots to increase their lot size.
Joe, my understanding about the sidewalk deferral, it's just for this changing of the lot sizes.
Sunset Manor.
It's just for changing the lot size. It's not for any development.
Right. It's, it's for the lot along Sunset Manor and the existing lot.
But it's only for the lot change, size change. It's not for any development. Not a deferral for future development.
Correct. It only pertains to this one.
Because again, we're looking at a subdivision plan, not a land development.
Right. Exactly. And the deferral, all the deferral is saying they're not requiring it now, but they have the right to require it at any time under the second class township code. If a waiver is granted, then one can argue that they don't have to do it unless, if, if they're enforced to. But under the second class township, they can at any time require sidewalk to be installed. So essentially what they're doing is, is not requiring it at this point, but not giving up their right as well.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm, I guess you're looking for an approval for the board of supervisors?
Yes. I think, I think this evening they'd like to have at least a conditional plan approval.
I'll make that.
I have a question. We may have talked about this before, but lot three, am I, am I understanding correctly that the fence from lot one goes into lot three?
Yes, yes. Yep.
Is there a reason for that?
Um, I'm thinking at this point, I'm not quite sure if he's gonna remove that or, you know, how he's gonna basically handle that. But you're correct. At this, at this time, the, the existing fence goes across the lot line.
Well, it looks like there's an above ground pool, at least as of whenever Google Maps did their thing. So part of that pool would be in lot three. So is that a, like?
I didn't see.
So as of right now, it's same ownership for all lots.
All three lots, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but.
Those would just have to be corrected at such time they would go to sell that land. I would.
Would develop.
I, yeah. I'm, I'm not sure the pool exists anymore.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember seeing it. I think the pool is gone, but you're correct about the fence.
So if lot three is developed, new owners could pitch a fit that this fence is on our property.
It would probably have to be corrected before it was sold.
So why is the line, why is the line there instead of?
Yeah.
Conforming lot. I'm sorry. I didn't mean that.
No, that, that's exactly it. At this point, we're, it's trying to make a conforming lot. As was mentioned earlier, you know, the intention at this point is to, for the owner to retain that. He's not proposing to, to sell that. I understand your question. It's a, it's a valid question as far as what would happen in the future. You know, my answer to you there would be certainly something that would have to get rectified at sale, either through, you know, removal or if, for whatever reason, he wanted to provide some sort of easement document that the neighbor would enter into. You know, either one of those two would have to happen at that time.
So if the line was shifted for the fence to be included, lot three wouldn't meet the regs?
What, what would be non-conforming?
Size.
But could, could the, the right side be, like, could the lines be swapped? Like it steps down, it goes this way.
Yeah.
Could it be the other way?
Yeah, it would also affect, I guess lot two then is, is where we would also run into an issue if the step was in the other direction there as well.
Could just this be simply addressed with a note on the plan?
I was gonna recommend, since he owns all, if he's sole ownership, we would recommend putting a note that the fence would need to be relocated.
Yeah, certainly.
And sale of property or.
Joe, there's also a fireplace there.
Or fireplace there too.
Yeah. I'd say any obstructions.
Yeah. Any improvements. Sure. Yep. That's fine. We can make sure we get a note on the plan to that effect.
Darren, for what it's worth, the existing today, that condition actually exists, looking at the second sheet of the plans. So it's not being created through this. It was, I think, probably a good thing. It actually is that way today.
Okay.
It's actually touching the lots that front on Philadelphia Terrace.
That I missed that. Okay. Oh, yeah.
I can't get into it, so.
It seems less so though.
Oh, it's definitely less so.
Yeah, see, it's, here's the existing, so it does cross already.
Hopefully we'll cover it.
Because the last time I remember, they moved that line all the way down.
Chuck, there's no, the, the lot to the lot three, I'm just not referencing it, but that's all open space today.
Uh, yes, I think that's.
It's wooded.
Yeah.
Most of it is wood. It's wooded.
On the old, that we had before.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they moved that down. But I don't, I don't, I don't understand where it's being moved to now.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is the proposed plan here with the new layout.
I don't see where that line is. It goes all the way down to here? Lot two?
Lot, lot three.
Yes.
This is.
All the way down there?
Yeah. That's lot three. This is lot, proposed lot two.
But the, I mean, the part on the left.
That doesn't make any sense to me. I might not recommend.
That looks completely different.
Yeah, the encroachment does, I think as was pointed out before, it's, it's less of an encroachment, but the, I think it's lots or units twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. You still have that encroachment on the, the neighbor's property there. Well, the adjoining, it's still all common ownership. But the other lot that he owns there, it does kind of spill over into that other lot. Yeah, I, I think the lot lines were all. Yeah, I think the lot lines were also laid out with some ideas in mind as far as what the owner may want to do as far as configuration of those lots and the improvements on them. So I think that may even become a moot point as far as the fence line goes, once he actually proposes to do something.
He has the existing nonconformance and making another nonconformance. Doesn't make sense.
Well, no, my opinion is it's all, it's all the same owner. There's no, nothing on those lots at this time, so there's no real opportunity for dispute. I think that no reference...
Yeah, I think we add a note there.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. Like I said, I think when you see a plan come through for that area to be improved, you're going to see that taken care of at that time, just with, you know, at this point in the future. Yep, that's fine.
That would be good.
Chuck, I do have one question, just as I was looking back to the original previous plan. I see, I do see that the now proposed Lot Two actually bumps out and that lot line goes out into the unopened Reading Avenue?
Yeah.
He also owns that property.
It's Reading Avenue.
It's not, it's not, it's actually, Hamid owns Reading Avenue. That's, it's, it's not a, it's just a paper street, we do not have the right-of-way or anything.
It's the whole...
He owns the whole roadbed.
On the plan, it shows that he owns.
Yeah, he basically owns both sides of what was the paper street, so, yeah. It is, it is a very, it's an unorthodox area, yeah.
Fortunately, a lot of these, these roads were never built and never dedicated, so they really just revert back to the landowner.
Chuck, it wouldn't create any inaccessible lots further to the east by bumping that out, correct?
No.
I think it will.
No, I think you're going to have back through the other way. I think he has clear out to the other side, too, I believe.
He would have access off of Donna Drive, it's not shown.
He has access.
Yeah, I think it's Donna Drive.
Yep.
It's not shown on the plan, but it's there.
That's overgrown woodland right now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, anything you would need to do there, you would have a little work to do.
It really doesn't create...
It's just a driving. I'm looking at what we had last time.
I was just asking, the paper street really, it can go away because it's, it's not creating a landlocked parcel or something like that, it's all owned by...
And the township never took it over, and it's not, it's not even on our tax roll, after you want it in that tax roll, but our street, our street map and so forth.
Right, we get, we look at fuels money for...
Right, yeah.
Nothing.
So it goes back...
Some of these have been disappearing.
We've, we have actually a lot over in that area. Some areas of Philadelphia aren't our streets at all, they're just unopened streets.
Right.
Is that from the building of 422, or was it...
No, I think it reverts back to the original developers. When they built this, they had areas that were designated for street construction, and over the years, the roads never got constructed and never got dedicated, so those roadbeds, they just go back to the original landowner or whoever is a current landowner. Unfortunately, you know, back then, there probably weren't escrow accounts and improvements agreements that we have in place nowadays where we make a developer post a bond or financial security to ensure that those improvements are properly constructed. But back then, I mean, that probably, I'm guessing back in 1950s, 40s, somewhere in that area, and back then, there really wasn't too many ordinances out there except for, probably just common.
This one's very fortunate that he actually owns it. Most of these don't have ownership, don't show ownership, they're kind of just no main name, and they're horrible, it's a lot of red tape to be able to obtain the property.
Some were owned by family members of Buddy's Nursery, and some of these were improved and they're not dedicated, some did get dedicated, they had to get improved first, but it is a little bit of a, I don't want to say a mess, but it is, we have areas where a lot of these unopens, they're just unopened streets, it's, and they're just, they call them paper streets, but we don't have any jurisdiction or any rights to them because they were never dedicated to us. If they were, we probably would be required to improve those because...
So the...
Part of the dedication process.
The only, I mean, the question I have in thinking about this is Lot Two, so currently it's the present owner, but if you think about them as individually owned parcels, okay, even though it's the same owner, this would create a landlocked piece. That lot would become, say, landlocked at that point.
Or would the part of Reading Avenue up to that count as a...
Well, technically, I guess that is owned by the same owner of Lots One and Two.
Yeah, I think this would come into a situation here, the issue would be if he does start to go and sell pieces of his property, I think that would be, you know, an issue, a transfer as far as...
An easement situation, either.
Yeah.
Or you would have to improve it at the rate.
Lots One and Two own parts of a potential road, and if you take that road off, that lot doesn't look like it'll be big enough, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
So we have Reading Avenue, and it's cut off parts of Lot Two, but Lot One owns a chunk of Reading Avenue, and that may be what makes it large enough, is that a possibility? If Reading Avenue disappeared...
Lot One, Lot One goes to, I'll say the, I'll say paper right-of-way of Reading Avenue, is that correct, Chuck?
Yes.
So Lot One itself was existing, all they did was make it conforming to, I believe, the 12,000 square foot minimum lot area. So there, they have access onto Sunset Manor. The other area is under the same ownership, but it's, it's a unique situation because it's really not a lot, it's, it's the actual roadbed itself.
Size of this lot.
Chuck, that is an interesting question, I mean, you tend to have a no-man's land left with that, that's a separate parcel, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
It is.
Would that be at some point consolidated, or is the intention is to keep that unopened portion under separate ownership?
I don't know the answer to that question, I haven't, we haven't discussed that with Hamid.
I mean, currently, those lots are quote "landlocked" if you, if you do not improve Reading because it just never got developed. So the situation, they would need to have access, and somewhere along the line, they would need to have an easement for Lot Number Three to allow for access onto Sunset Manor.
Chuck, I'm just going to ask the question, is there, is there opportunity to maybe bump Lot Two out to encompass Lot Thirteen to the east rather than, rather than bumping it up into Reading Avenue and still obtain the goals that you have?
So you're basically saying expand it more to the east?
Utilizing what's shown as Lot Thirteen perhaps to get that, so that lot line kind of falls and you still have that unopened access at that point?
Yeah, I don't know, off the top of my head, I know Hamid had some, you know, ideas as far as, you know, what he wants to do in that area. I'm thinking at this point, you know, we drew that lot line probably for future, you know, development ideas of what he wants to do in that area. So short answer is, I'm thinking that line is probably, you know, where it's at right now is probably more in line with what he has an idea of doing in the future.
I think I need to share that with us.
Well, Chuck, would it be reasonable to request that there be an easement?
No, I, I don't, I don't think so, I think that's a reasonable request, yeah.
I think it's just Lot Two that needs it, because without it, Lot Two is either an easement to Reading Avenue or, I guess, to the north as well, because he connects to his other property to the north, correct? Somehow to get access to it.
Chuck, maybe what you can do is just that area, that roadbed be provided for access for future lots so that it's, it's covered as an easement.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't think that's a reasonable...
I'm assuming he's going to have, I mean, that was a review comment that they're either going to have to develop Reading Avenue or do something back there for access, so maybe a good time now to have an easement.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
And Joe, would it make sense not to complicate, just to ask the question, do you want the note to be locked into Reading Avenue, or, for example, could there be, depending on how the development works, a shared access easement through Lot Three potentially to get you to Philadelphia? Like, do we want to be specific with it to Reading, or just that Lot Two has to be provided with access?
I think at this point, Lot Three will have, is designated to have access on the Sunset Manor only. I would think if they would come back and for some reason subdivide that again hypothetically, then I think we'd be in a position that we have to require...
Yeah, he owns that, yeah.
So that he would have, because we want frontage on Sunset Manor for Lot Three.
Yeah, I think the idea of the easement through that area in there is a reasonable solution to the issue.
I mean, that would allow for, in the future, if you wanted to build the street and dedicate it, it would also allow a case where if they wanted just a private lane that's shared by multiple...
Right, right, as long as it's built, I mean, we have our driveway, section of the ordinance, but they can still build the road per township standards and still keep it private.
Mm-hmm.
That's to their discretion.
Yep.
So we're asking for an easement for parcel two, correct?
The easement would be for parcel two, yes.
I didn't see, they did, and I saw this line here as going across.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Are we just setting us up for a nice meeting in the future where we try to get the lines right, or... Listen, I wrote in my notes convoluted.
Yeah, and the area in general is, it does have some weird characteristics to it and some existing things that are, what I wouldn't refer to as common with respect to how the properties are set up and the lot lines. So I think the subdivision, the way you have it there, and then also with that easement, I think does clean this up, you know, to the, to the greatest extent possible here, where I don't think you're going to have that issue in the future.
This seems to mostly work because he owns it all.
Correct, yes.
Maybe that was just an error.
So just, again, question, that easement, is that easement going to read that's access for Lot Two, or will there also be an easement across Lot Two for properties to the east?
I think it would just be for Lot Two, I think anything to the east, you'd need to work out almost in the other direction.
He owns, everything, looks like he owns to the east also.
Right. I think the other lot would be accessed by the Donna Drive.
Mm-hmm.
But without, without Reading Avenue, where does Lot Two get its access?
I thought we did discuss an easement off of Reading.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, that'll be an easement.
As part of this plan, they're going to have to put an easement in to access Lot Two through that unopened street.
Not to be stupid, okay, but if you look here, just look here, if you look right here, if he could come through this way, on the bottom, right there, an easement right there on Lot Three for a driveway, that would take care of that also.
Yeah.
That would give him frontage, that would get him frontage on Two.
I don't know, I don't know what his plans are.
Yeah, they have, because the access for Lot Three is proposed off of Sunset Manor.
Sunset Manor, right.
Yeah, I think that's the, the plan at this point, is to try to, you know, make these three lots come off of Sunset rather than trying to go back out to Philadelphia.
And then with the easement, Lot Two would be accessed off of Sunset.
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Since that's basically improved road.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, so at this point this evening, Chuck, are you looking for an approval?
Yeah, I think if, if there's comfort in, you know, making it conditioned on, obviously addressing anything in the GVC letter, and then the two items we discussed here this evening as far as a note that would address the removal of any existing improvements at a future time, and then also the access easement, I think those would be two additional conditions you could attach to the review letter that we would be agreeable to.
And Joe, would this be preliminary, and then they'd have to come back for a final?
No, this would be the final.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you tell me what the size of Lot Two is with that and without that, a little adjustment onto Reading Avenue? Do you have that information?
It's 26372 currently, the way it exists with that little notch out, and I, I don't know exactly what that would...
And what, what's the requirements for...
24,000, well, no, 12,000. If you're going to do a, a single-family, I'm sorry, a duplex or a, you know, a double, it would be 24.
So is, would, removing that section still leaves it available for extra township building? Yeah, how can I say this correctly?
Yeah.
We don't have any rights to it.
We don't have any right there.
Yeah.
He owns that land.
It's his property.
It's his property, period. He owns that. We can't, we can't do anything unless we go there and buy it.
Okay, yes, right, you take it by eminent domain, which...
At this point, the township has no interest in that property.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, just we've provided for the easement, for the access to the public street, so.
Right.
Okay. What's the feeling, Planning Commission, do we want to do a conditional approval on this at this point?
Yes, since everybody has so many questions, I think we do conditional on it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to recommend a conditional approval with the conditions being that the easement be provided for access to Lot Two from Sunset Manor Drive?
There's notes that to remove...
Any improvements prior to the sale of Lot, or, or, yeah, I guess we could say any parcel to a different owner.
Or, or developing, or developing?
Or developing, yeah, or develop, even development by the, and development by the same owner.
Well, Glenn, if I could, we want to make it only the sale of Lot Three, because the scenario could be Lot Two could be sold, Lot One still operating, and we'd be telling Lot One to take the fence down, even though it really doesn't need to change. Should we say development, any development of Lot Three?
Lot Three, yes, that's a good, that's a good point, yes, absolutely, yeah, good point.
So it's the sale of any lot or the development of Lot Three?
I wasn't thinking, I was only thinking not sale under the scenario of, say, Lot Two is the first one sold.
Right.
It doesn't really affect One and Three and that house, so I think making it just the sale of Lot Three is the one that triggers the need to move it.
Yeah, because that's the only affected parcel.
I think it's development or sale.
But as a, I'm thinking as a potential buyer of Lot One, I'm buying something that's nonconforming, and then someone else buys Lot Three, and then I have to take my fence down?
So it would actually be the sale of, it would actually be the sale of Lot One or Three.
I was trying to give the flexibility of Two to be developed without...
I agree.
Just any parcel.
Any parcel.
And I'm trying to watch out for future...
Any parcel.
Sale of any parcel, that, any encroachments on the, on the lot lines would have to be removed.
It's just too confusing.
Any other conditions? Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by less. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Jeff, I'm one opposed.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Did you make one?
Who made the motion?
Everybody was, except for Jeff, Jeff was opposed. Jeff was opposed. Okay. Thank you.
You share also for your next agenda. For your next agenda.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay here.
3801 Perkyomen Avenue. This is the Domino's.
Yes.
Location, if you will. We've reviewed this at a couple of meetings also.
Yeah, so hopefully this one's a little bit more simple with respect to the approach that we're taking here. So, yeah, we, we were here, I want to say two months ago, um, in front of the Planning Commission to present the plan initially. And this is the property at 3801 Perkyomen Avenue, which is the existing Domino's. Uh, it's located along Perkyomen Avenue. A couple of the items that we discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, the, the direction to us at the last Planning Commission meeting was try to clean up a few things, get some answers and then come back and report back to the Planning Commission at that time with respect to progress. Just a reminder that this is a preliminary plan submission that was made for, for this project. So if, Joe, if you're okay, I can just kind of give some updates on some of the comments.
Sure, um, that, that's okay with the Planning Commission?
Okay, um, so the one item under zoning that we talked about last time was with respect to the retaining wall and the location of the retaining wall with respect to the property line. At the last meeting, it was explained to the Planning Commission that there was an agreement that was in place with the adjoining property owners for that retaining wall. I, I believe the, um, uh, discussion that we had at last month, at the last meeting we were here was whether or not this would require any sort of zoning relief if there were in fact agreements in place. I, I think the request then was to just make sure we provide the township with the appropriate, um, agreements for the retaining wall to make sure that in the future, if something does have to get repaired, that there's sufficient access there in order to do that. That, those agreements were drafted and gotten to a point with the neighbors. Um, I, I believe there's an extension, Jeff's behind me here, but.
I'm Jeff Gunnar of Donald Construction. Those agreements were put in place when we were here with offer. But they, they currently expired based on the agreement themselves, the date of the agreement. So we have reached out to those property owners and we're in the process right now of making amendment to the existing agreement, which is to, basically they're good for two years and within the two years of the agreement, we can start the construction of those retaining walls. And they also have to make this agreement as well. So the township should have copies of those with the RLP.
Right, we do.
So the idea with that one is we would certainly provide, you know, once that's finalized and the agreements are, are reestablished, we would provide that to the township to make sure that the township is comfortable, again with the wording, just to make sure that, you know, you feel that the, the intent of the zoning requirement is being met through the agreements. So that's the update on, on that particular item. Unless there's any questions from the Planning Commission, I'll move on to the next one. There were, um, I'm going to lump three together here. Um, there was wetlands delineation, which we talked about last time as far as requesting a waiver for that. Again, the site's pretty much developed, um, you know, wetlands being on site. Um, we looked through a couple of online databases. There's really no evidence of, of hydroic soils or any wetlands in that area. So the request was made to allow for a waiver from just having a formal delineation of wetlands on the property. And then the other two items which we had asked for waivers for, but I believe the Planning Commission had asked instead of the waiver that we go and do some information on, was mainly with respect to the environmental assessment report and the environmental hazard report. And at this time, the owner has engaged Liberty Environmental to complete a phase one environmental study for the property. So that's currently in process. And that's again, something once, once we have the environmental assessment, we can provide that to the township for review. At this point, we don't anticipate any issues, but again, we'll make sure that we get that information to the township. So that would be no longer a waiver request from those two items. We would essentially be providing a, a phase one to, to address those items. Another item that we discussed was with respect to the ability to access through, um, the unopened East 38th Street, which at the time, there was a fair amount of discussion we had about, you know, what are the rights? Who has access to that area on 38th Street? We were able to find a copy of a, a prior agreement between the landowners in that area that did specifically cite the ability to access for this particular property through 38th Street, which we did provide to the township for review, which would basically establish the right to use that area. Then in conjunction with that, in addition to establishing the right to do it, the Planning Commission had asked us to potentially look at widening that area and maybe providing a curb in the back of the proposed building as well, just to kind of clean that up a little bit, which the owner agreed to. And the revised plan does show some additional improvement back there, some widening to make that a little bit more passable through the area of 38th Street. So that has been addressed and updated. There was the issue too of the tying in of the storm source system, which we are in the process of working with PennDOT on that as far as connection to the storm source system in, in 422. So that's an outside agency approval that we'll work through. Erosion and sediment control, we did submit a plan to Conservation District. We did get a technical deficiency letter, uh, which we addressed and submitted back. So at this point, we would anticipate getting ENS approval here very shortly. That's something certainly we'll, uh, provide the township with, um, the adequacy letter when we receive it. This is not an acre of disturbance, so there's no MPDS permit. It's just a standard ENS adequacy letter that we'll be obtaining for the project. Lighting, we did provide a, a basic lighting plan, talking to Jeff here earlier this evening. We're going to work with Fromm Electric or a vendor to kind of basically bring that into focus, provide a little bit more of a detailed lighting plan with fixtures and photometrics that Joe had asked for in his review letter, so we'll certainly address that. Fire prevention, I think we were able to work through, uh, comments with respect to, um, fire prevention. And then we were also looking at ADA accessibility, which we've also provided additional information for as well. So I, I think those are my, um, updates. Uh, Joe, I don't know if there's anything I missed from your review letter. Everything else, looking through the review letter was pretty much either a will comply or, you know, something that had already been addressed.
The only co, the only comment I have is, um, with wetlands, you were requesting a waiver, correct?
Yeah.
I can't remember if we took action or not on that waiver request.
I thought we did.
I thought we did too.
I think you did.
Okay, okay. And as far as an improvements agreement, that's a final plan requirement typically for land development. I, we've been only, um, requiring money be posted for anything such as stormwater. And I believe landscaping is something we've had in the past that we've done for sheets and we've also done for the mattress, um, development. But that's something that we can work, work out at final plan stage, even though it's just a bold comment. But other than that, I think Chuck, I think you pretty much hit everything else. Everything else is basically just standard, um, I'll say standard comments that need to be, you know, signatures and so forth. But I think you did hit upon the, I'll say the, the board items. I don't have any other comments unless the Planning Commission has any comments or questions that they would like to ask. Any other questions?
Did you level the lot differently? For some reason, I remember it stepped in the picture at the beginning.
Uh, with respect to the buildings?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we did actually, um, we went back and we, we looked at, um, basically providing one elevation for the proposed storefronts, just to allow some more flexibility as far as, you know, internally, rather than having steps eternally. If somebody wanted more than one unit, it would be easier if everything was just on one level. So we did, uh, make a revision probably from the original, probably all the way back to the sketch plan is what you're thinking of, where there were some steps. I think there might have been one or two steps in the original sketch plan that was provided. But we were able to grade that out. So it's one floor elevation and then we just worked out the ADA access to one particular point, um, to the front of the building there, uh, to be able to provide that access.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, uh, chuckling this to get those few items cleaned up and see you next month?
Yeah, it, it, I, I would, is, would the Planning Commission be willing to consider? And we're still at preliminary, this is a preliminary plan. Um, would there be any consideration to, um, allow for a conditional preliminary plan at this point in order to just sort of advance to, um, get us to the point where we're cleaning up just the comments in here and outside agencies, uh, for preliminary plan? That would be my only request is if there's any consideration from the Planning Commission and maybe at least give us something at preliminary at this point.
Uh, the only concern I have is stormwater isn't fully addressed yet. As far as connection, Chuck, you said you're still working on that, I guess through PennDOT.
Yeah, that would be outside agency as far as coordination with PennDOT to basically have them sign off on the connection for, uh, stormwater to the system.
And, uh, the other requirement, we don't have the environmental report yet. So I think, yeah, I mean, my, myself, I would prefer to maybe wait until we have some of that. Last you said you would do.
Okay, so.
Is everyone in agreement? Wait till next month till we have those reports?
I could go your way, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so at this point, if, just to make sure we don't, make sure we're, we're set before we come back then. So make sure that we have the phase one study back to you. And would the agreements be something you would need to see as well with respect to the retaining wall?
The staff should see that.
I mean, we have outdated copies.
Yeah, yeah.
I think on the, and we've done this in the past, I think like on the agreements, that could be something that it's just a condition that you get them and.
Yeah, I, I think, I think if we have a final copy at final plan stage, as long as we have it verified that they're current and signed, that's something I think that can be addressed at final plan, yeah.
Plus the lighting's.
It could be, it can be a condition on the preliminary plan approval that they're, they're taken care of.
That's a good point because the lighting, we don't have the lighting yet.
Okay.
So, yeah, hopefully we can have that ready.
Okay, we'll work on those few items and then we'll make sure that we're, um, have those in place before we come back and ask for, uh, uh, an approval from the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Any comments from anyone in the public at this point?
One public today.
Oh, one person? Okay, hearing nothing. Any, uh, anything from Planning Commission members?
About staff or engineer?
The only thing I will inform you that we will be seeing plans in the near future for development of a 10 acre parcel as part of the Exeter Golf Club estates. This is the, um, part of the Henry Philippini property. There's, they, when they received a zoning variance for the continued use of the clubhouse as a restaurant establishment, the zoning hearing board mentioned that any future, development or subdividing of land must seek approval by the Board of Supervisors. At our last meeting, they did receive approval to be able to submit plans officially or, or formally, I should say. So we'll probably see those maybe another two or three months.
They're, uh, they're thinking about five two acre lots.
Cul-de-sac off of, um, drawing a blank. Mulligan, I think. Actually, we, we received plans back in July of last year or two years ago. No, I'm sorry, three years ago. No, July, it was a concept plan, uh, and no action. We did a, we did a, it was a sketch plan, an informal sketch plan. Our office did produce a review letter showing, you know, what items that need to address and they never went anywhere with it because they needed to have, uh, Board of, Board of Supervisors approval. So they did, did receive that last Monday night.
Jason, is, is there still a request to have a special meeting about this zoning change?
Uh, we're going to add that to the May agenda.
Again, I would like to have somebody here from the redevelopment authority.
I can, I can definitely request. I did ask that our solicitor Chad be here also. And I can also request that somebody here be here from the redevelopment authority.
Jason, can you give us some insight on that?
At this point, I honestly don't know what I'm really allowed to say and not say. It's, it's very, very preliminary, it's very early. I can say there's, uh, you know, there's, there's talks, negotiations between the, between the township and the Barks County Redevelopment Authority to, um, you know, have them step in and, and help us redevelop that property to maybe what would be the best use for the township. You know, it, it, obviously you guys know it was rezoned for residential. So you're going to see something of that nature.
In multi-use.
That is also a no, yes. So, um, whether that retains or not will be at a future date. But we will have a special meeting. I'm going to put it on the agenda from, uh, next, for next meeting, which is May, the May meeting. And I'll have, uh, representation here from all parties involved.
And why isn't it just a regular meeting or?
It is going to be a regular. There was talk of a special meeting between this meeting and that meeting and there's really not a big need. So we're going to put it on the May agenda.
For actual.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. If no one has anything else, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.